Turn your phone to silent or to vibrate, and then let's all stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda, take the roll, please.
Councilmember Strebe.
Here.
Councilmember Dalby.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Lozio.
Here.
Items on the consent agenda. Minutes for regular meeting number 24 on July 19, 2016 is presented. Acknowledged the June financial report and payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department. Civil Service Commission Communication Specialist Eligibility List of July 28, 2016. Contract with the Otomo Economic Development Corporation for period July 1, 16 through June 30, 17 in the amount of $20,000 to promote economic development. Agreement with Municipal Code Corporation, MUNICODE, for Phase One Legal Review and Conference of the Otomo Municipal Code Recodification in amount of $4,675. Set the date for a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Sanitary Utility Access Program 2016. Beer and liquor applications for Parkview Plaza Hotel at Otomo, 107 East Second Street. Shims, which used to be O'Toole's Pizzeria, 536 East Main, transfer of license. All applications pending vital inspections.
Move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Need a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to refer to Mr. Morris, our city administrator. He's got a couple of comments he'd like to make, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Two items to bring your attention. The first item you see listed is goal-setting exercise. The city council has done this previously, and that's had a goal-setting exercise. Some of it is strategic planning exercise with Jeff Schott from the University of Iowa's with the municipal institute at the university. And he's done these a couple of times. I spoke with him at a meeting approximately two weeks ago, and he asked me if we were interested in undertaking it, and I told him we would. To make a long story short, the city staff is going to have a meeting with him. The department heads and some other members of the city staff are going to have a meeting with him on Friday, this Friday, at 2:00 p.m. At that meeting, I want to make that, frankly, an opportunity for us not only to talk about goal-setting, but also doing some strategic planning, which is going to be a little bit more expensive. He's discounted this. I think it's like $1,200 or something, significantly off what usually we'd pay for these. But he will be here at City Hall again at 2:00 p.m. When staff is finished with that meeting, I've also provided some summaries to the last session, which was done in 2014. If anyone wants to see my notes or a copy of the study, I have that on me. But again, that'll be an opportunity for staff to somewhat vet that process and make sure that, in fact, it's going to have elements of strategic planning. Again, he will be here this Friday. If you have any questions, please let me know. The other item you see listed is Wood River Energy. This is a project, quite frankly, I think, Mayor, you and staff were working on before I arrived in the fall of '15. It is a company out of the Des Moines area that provide, they're a natural gas provider. They purchase unused natural gas from entities primarily being Mid-American energy. And what they do is they discount that, that gas that isn't used, and they sell it to larger commercial customers such as the city. And as an example of that, some of the municipalities that are covered, the city of Brunel, the city of Stewart, under contract are Fairfield, Fort Dodge, Creston, and Kala. There's approximately 25 schools that they serve. In addition, locally, they serve Pizza Ranch, YMCA, and Job Corps. Athena Simpson, who is the lead person on this, the lead contact person, can't be here this evening. She has another traveling engagement and won't be here at the meeting on the 16th either because, again, she has somewhat of a busy schedule. But I'd like to put that in front of council. I think it's the city attorney, Ms. Keith. She and I spoke with her at length and with Athena. And the projected savings, if you look at some of the entities that she's already made contact with here in town, one of them being Bridgeview, projected savings in natural gas is approximately $2,300. We're talking about a one-year contract. I can appreciate Ms. Keith's concern that we not have a long-term contract where we're locked in. I think it's a good concept. But again, if you have any questions, I want to at least give you an update on this. You have any questions about this process, how it works? I know I've included it in the weekly reports I provide to council. Please let me know. I do want to emphasize again, this, what staff is going to propose will be a one-year contract. That's all I have, Mayor, unless you are.
Okay, thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you much.
Item in our agenda, we always invite citizens to comment on any item on the agenda. Is there anyone that wants to address the council on any item on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to department recommendations. Public hearings, first thing up.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not-to-exceed $150,000 general obligation capital loan notes. I receive no objections on this item.
Good evening, Bob.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thank you. Public hearing, this is one of two that we are going to be bringing forth today, but is required by law prior to the issuance of general obligation debt. This portion of the debt issuance that we'll be doing in early September will be used to finance repayment of Bridgeview, Inc., the fiber insulation project, and the Buxton
This is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to address this item, this is a time to step up. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Resolution number 192, 2016, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not-to-exceed $150,000 general obligation capital loan notes. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 192, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Any questions for Bob? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens. This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not-to-exceed $750,000 general obligation bonds. I receive no objections on this item.
Okay, Bob, go ahead.
Once again, this is the second part. These bonds will be used to finance work on Jefferson Street Bridge for improvements and reimburse the general fund for the asbestos removal that occurred earlier, or actually last fiscal year.
I think for the clarification for our audience and for citizens, Bob, would you just mention the three items you included? You gave us additional information, and citizens don't have that in front of them. So you just mentioned the three items, the bridge, the asbestos, and the additional.
It'll be for the Jefferson Street Bridge. I just, improvements and reimburse the general fund for the asbestos removal.
All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone wants to address the council on this item.
Did you want the previous one, Your Honor? Or, because that had three items. This has two. I'm just a little confused.
I've got the $750 is for the three items. Jefferson Street Bridge, asbestos remediation, and additional authorization.
That was my understanding.
Thank you.
Number three, that was my understanding as well.
That's. Mr. Mayor, I'll let Mr. Jay back this up, but I believe the items you just mentioned are the larger projects.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's for those two items.
Okay.
What, therefore?
Is there anyone who wants to address the council? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Resolution number 193, 2016, instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not-to-exceed $750,000 general obligation bonds. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 193, 2016.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Bob?
Your Honor, I'd like to some further clarification on this, just so we're all on the same page. I have down here, 600,000 of this was going to the Jefferson Street Bridge deck replacement. 100,000 of it was for asbestos remediation, and 28,000, I believe, was for clearing of some of the asbestos. And then additional, beyond that, was for some additional asbestos clearance, some holes and stuff.
That will be in the total, but the majority of that will be, as far as the allocation, is covered underneath the City Hall.
Yeah.
25, we paid like 45,000, then we have some additional remediation downstairs we'll be doing. We have to wrap the steam pipes. We have to take additional asbestos off down below, especially when we do the boiler. So the additional amount of money will be used to pay for that.
And hats off to you for doing that, because then that will clear a small liability and issues with asbestos in that basement. I know that's been an ongoing issue for City Hall, being their building. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Ready to vote? Take the roll, please.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Thank you, Bob.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the status of the Community Development Block Grant Contract Richmond Area Housing Rehabilitation Project. I receive no objections on this item.
Good evening, Jody. I have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a required status update of the CDBG grant that we have. It's for housing rehabilitation in the Richmond Street area, and it involves the rehabilitation of up to 10 homes. Those homes need to meet certain HUD standards with the owners meeting LMI and homeownership requirements. The budget for the project is $380,000, which is funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And then we had a local match of $2,500 per house for a maximum of $25,000 per house plus $8,000 for lead remediation. We currently have two houses that have been completed under this program, and we have five more under contract. And IEDA is going to extend our contract for four months so that we can complete those five houses. By the time we finish this grant, we expect to have expended $200,000 to $230,000. And the grant will end the first part of December.
Okay, are there any questions for Jody? Public hearing, is there anybody who wants to address this, first of all? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No, it's just the status update.
Okay. All right, let's move on then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Resolution number 194, 2016, approving change order number 11 for Contract Four, Division One of the 2010 Flood Protection Mitigation Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 194, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Dwight. Dwight's our city engineer. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Change order number 11 includes removing and replacing eight sets of concrete steps and seven handrails at locations along Fourth Street between South Holt Street and McLean Street. The cost of removal, replacement, and handrail installation increases the contract by $35,640. This change order also includes a final quantity adjustment of the original proposed quantities. This change order decreases the total contract amount by $736,551.50 to reconcile with the actual quantity of work completed. In total, this change order decreases the contract amount by $700,911.50. Contract Four was awarded to Langman Construction, Inc. of Rock Hall in Illinois in the amount of $5,633,231 on July 1, 2014. Staff recommends approval of change order number 11.
Any questions for Dwight? Pretty good breakout, pretty good summary in your packet.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
This is a huge decrease, $700,000. So this is just a wrap-up at the end of the project for quantity adjustments on that $700,000. I just never have quite seen a decrease this big.
Yeah, it was all quantity-dependent, so these are quantities that weren't incorporated into the work, so it just worked out to be a pretty sizable sum.
Yeah, well, that's going the right direction, so.
Yeah.
Good deal. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Resolution number 195, 2016, awarding Contract A, Concrete Repairs for the Beach Renovations Phase One Project to Turner Concrete Construction in the amount of $288,565. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 195, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Jean. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This project consists of separate contracts to address repaired renovations at the beach at Otomo located at 101 Church Street. Contract A will consist of concrete repairs addressing the kiddie pool and the catch pool, including concrete demolition, horizontal concrete placement, and shotcrete gunite vertical concrete placement, and waterproofing. Construction on this project shall begin September 6, 2016, and conclude by May 19, 2017. A pre-bid meeting was held on July 20, 2016, at City Hall with the following in attendance: Solid Water Slide, Carroll Supply, Abelton, Inc., G Asphalt Western Specialty Contractors, Turner Concrete, Slide Renew, and Frazee Construction Company. Bids were received and opened by the city of Otomo on July 27, 2016, at 2:00 p.m. Six sets of plans were mailed, and four bids were received. The low bidder is Turner Concrete Construction in the amount of $288,565,000. Plans and specifications were sent to the following contractors: Dodge Reports, Master Builders of Iowa, Squarefoot, Turner Concrete Construction, Minturn, and Norris Asphalt Paving. In addition, the plans and specifications were available on the city's website. The bid amount was $288,565,000. Engineer's estimate was $262,000.
Okay. Are there any questions for Jean about this project?
I have a couple of questions. Do I understand this right, that Turner Concrete is the prime, and all of this work will be done under him?
Yeah, as far as I know, Turner Concrete is doing all of the work. For the concrete, that is.
Okay. And I see here where G Asphalt out of Cedar Rapids got the asphalt bid.
Correct.
And Norris didn't bid it at all? That's unusual.
They did not bid on this project, and I don't know why.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one quick question. You said the engineer's estimate was 262, and the actual bid came in at 288. What was it, was it just the price of the concrete that created such a discrepancy between the engineer's estimate and what the actual bid came in?
Yeah, we didn't discuss that at the bid meeting, but I'm not sure if Dwight has any comments on that, but I don't know why the price differential is.
There were a couple of items that, after speaking with Turner Concrete, there were a couple of items that came in a little bit more expensive than what I estimated. Whenever we pour concrete up against an existing surface, we install an expanding water seal so that water can't pass through. And that ended up being about twice as expensive as I anticipated, and there's a lot of it that goes into this project. And the other side of it, waterproofing too, was a little more expensive than what I anticipated. So in light of those, you know, they have a reasonable and decent bid.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Good question. Any other comments or questions? Okay, if you're ready to vote, take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Resolution number 196, 2016, awarding Contract B, Slide Repairs for the Beach Renovations Phase One Project to Slide Care LLC in the amount of $115,473. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 196, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented. Go ahead, Jean.
Okay, Contract B is for repairs to four slides, including fiberglass repairs, aligning and sealing section joints, cleaning and waxing, sandblasting, and repainting the stair tower, and waterproofing concrete landings. The low bidder on this project is Slide Care in the amount of $115,473. Plans and specifications were sent to the same contractors, and once again, the bid amount is $115,473. The engineer's estimate was $130,000.
Any questions for Jean or Dwight? Either one. Okay, hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Resolution number 197, 2016, awarding Contract C, Parking Lot Renovations for the Beach Renovations Phase One Project to G Asphalt Systems Incorporated in the amount of $46,315. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 197, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Go ahead, Jean.
Okay, Contract C will address asphalt parking lot repairs, including crack sealing and fog seal applications. The low bidder on this project is G Asphalt Systems in the amount of $46,315. Plans and specifications were sent to the same contractors once again. And once again, the bid amount is $46,315. The engineer's estimate was $55,000.
Any questions for Jean or Dwight? Either one. Take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Resolution number 198, 2016, approving change order number two and final pay estimate number 12 for Contract Four, Division Two of the 2010 Flood Protection Mitigation Project in the amount of $13,946.89. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 198, 2016.
Is there a motion?
The recommendation is presented. Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dwight.
Thank you, Mayor. Change order number two includes the final quantity adjustment of the original proposed quantities for this project. This change order decreases the total contract amount by $88,989.20. New contract sum is $278,937.80. Division Two of Contract Four is now complete in accordance with the plans and specifications of the project, and the city of Otomo owes Langman Construction $13,946.89 per final pay estimate number 12. Staff recommends approval of change order number two and accepting the project as complete.
Any questions for Dwight? Good job, Dwight. No questions, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Thanks, Dwight.
Resolution number 199, 2016, approving change order number three for the UV Disinfection Project at Water Pollution Control Facility, decreasing the project by $28,380.45. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 199, 2016.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Cam. I don't know that we introduce you as the superintendent of the Water Pollution Control Facility, but good to have you here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. This change order will be for deduction in the total construction price by $28,380.45. This deduction is for services provided by WPCF staff, including installing the access road, painting the awning structure, pumping out tanks, moving a fence, and work in filling in the old chlorine contact basin and seeding. The original contract price was $813,000. Change order one increased the price by $2,988.95. That was approved by council on March 15 of 2016. This change order will lower the total contract price by $28,380.45, leaving the total contract price now to $787,608.50.
Are there any questions for Cam?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but after the vote, I would like to speak while Cam's up there for a moment.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Okay, Chair, I'll recognize Councilmember Myers.
Well, Cam, I'd like to thank you and your staff, workers, for last week, I believe it was, was the National Wastewater Treatment Awareness Week. And you guys put on a lunch, which we should have done for you, but you put it on and brought in all the food and invited guests, and it was just really nice interaction. So congratulations to your group, and thanks for doing that.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Glad to do it.
Thanks, Cam. We're at the point in our agenda where if there's anybody in the audience that wants to address any item of city business, this is the time to come to the microphone. Seeing none, I'd like to turn the floor back to Administrator Morris, who wants to make another comment about an item coming up.
Thank you, Mayor. I neglected to mention there will be a special meeting a week from tonight. That'll be on the 9th at 5:30 here in this chamber, and the purpose of that meeting will be to host Cody Gunnerson. Cody works for the Buxton Group. And the Buxton Group, which is, Bob Jay referred to a little while ago, that's one of the items that's going to be funded in this bond issue. The Buxton Group provides certain analytics. In addition to that, contact information and contact outreach to commercial entities and restaurants that may have an interest in locating in your community. What I'm impressed with them is it isn't a simple contact where they call someone up and see whether or not this would be an entity that would be interested in locating in your town. They actually put together the metrics, and they'll measure everything, customer behavior to debit and credit card receipts, and see whether or not people are leaving this community to go to, say, other restaurants or commercial entities. I'm very, very pleased with the work they've done. Again, just want to emphasize, that will be a week from this evening, and he will be here to put on a slideshow for us. I know the mayor and I have met with him already, very impressed with him, but want to make sure that Council has an opportunity to not only meet him, but ask questions he may have before you approve a consider in a final contract. I just wanted to bring that up, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. At this time, I'd like to take exception too and share some thoughts with you about our past week. As you know, we hosted RagBri, and I would like to just read this to, "Dear City Council and residents, I can't tell you how proud I am of the community's effort in hosting RagBri this past week. We all have reasons to celebrate. The entire community gets an A-plus for the job they did to open your homes, businesses, and hearts to the RagBri guests. I had countless numbers of writers compliment the condition of the cities and especially our parks. They also commented on having a free concert and a great fireworks show. None of this would have been possible without the generous help of our sponsors, and I have a list of twenty-eight sponsors that I'll give to you, and you can see all the things they did for us. This whole effort was made possible by the great volunteers who worked so hard for months in preparation, making sure every detail was taken into consideration. In addition to the co-chairs of the various committee, I want to personally thank all the city employees who helped to make this such a great success. It's dangerous to list people for fear of leaving someone out, but there are some outstanding individuals who should be recognized tonight. In our Parks Department, Director Gene Ratchey did an outstanding job in outlining the campground area, and I heard nothing but compliments about how the tents and the mobile vehicles were handled over at the park. Chris Cobbler and all the seasonal help for the condition of the campgrounds, for the position of the porta-potties, and for handling all of the trash, which we sometimes forget is a monumental effort. Public Works, Larry Seals for his direction and help, his experience, Chad Carlson for making lots of maps for us, Mike Songer, Electrical, Steve Edgington, Ryan Lewis for the streets and barricades. And then there's the Health and Inspections, Jody Gates, who handled the food and vendor row, which is an outstanding effort. We had thirty-some vendors and getting them all positioned and making sure that they were certified, and doing everything legal was a great job. Public Safety, our Chief Tom McAndrew, and especially Lieutenant Jason Bell, who were at all the meetings and gave us good direction and protected us and made us think about the safety of the riders and vehicular traffic. Chief Tony Miller and all the firemen, especially having the American flag hanging over our beer garden area and the parking lot at Bridgeview. And then Joni Keith, legal, we had some issues with liquor license and positioning and things that we had to take care of at the last minute, and Joni came through and helped. Often, the city people are left out because they're supposed to do what's good for the city, and they're paid staff. But the positive and friendly attitudes displayed by the staff was noticed by our visitors. You might ask, why is this such a big deal? The offer of time and resources was a major investment in economic development. We put Otomo back on the map in a positive and progressive way. We had people from fifty states and some fifty countries here to see and experience the hospitality of the Otomo community. This will have benefits for us in the future. People noticed the changes in the community, especially the ones that were here in two thousand and nine. The whole city looked cleaner and more inviting to our visitors. All of you citizens can be very proud. The writers will comment on the various cities they visited, and they will be voting for the best city on the entire RagBri route, and I'm confident we're going to get that award. As soon as we wrap up the details, we will give a full report to the community, and we are planning on having a thank-you party for the community at the Bridgeview Center, and I believe the date is August twenty-ninth. I'll clarify that for sure, but we have to arrange that with Bridgeview. We want to thank all of the volunteers and their families who helped make this such a great success. And most importantly, it was safe, and it was a wonderful day, and we're just really blessed that we had such great turnout. So, on behalf of the entire city staff, I want to say thank you to all of you who had a hand in making this a great experiment, and it really was wonderful. So, again, hats off to all the city staff, no matter what they did. Now, with that, I would turn to a couple of other things. We had a great weekend after RagBri. We had the Wounded Warriors here on Friday night at Bridgeview. We had an open house at the airport on Saturday morning, which was out there and great breakfast and chance to visit and talk to pilots. Got to see the fly-in with the miniature radio-controlled planes. That was great. And then last but not least, Andy and I have been talking, and I will bring to the Council a recommendation in the future for an Economic Rapid Response Team. This came out of the Mayor's Advisory Committee, and they suggested that we probably might want to think about that as the City Council. So, I'm going to give you a list of names and ask that you approve that, and we, my first two choices would be Andy Morris, our city administrator, and Chief McAndrew, our police chief, who are familiar with doing tabletop exercises and safety and taking care of situations that come up rather quickly. So, I'll bring that back to you in a future meeting. Is there any other business that you want to bring up for the good of the city? Joni, you look like you want to say something.
Did you want to mention the group that's wanting to support our law enforcement officers?
Thank you. Andy?
I'll probably defer to Ms. Keith on it. She's done a little bit more research than I have on this. I realize that as well, the city clerks, there's also, actually, I think probably Mandis had more contact than any of us.
A group in Otomo is interested in providing visual support to our law enforcement community in light of some of the events that are going on across our nation. And there's a group that's wanting to push or voluntarily request citizens to put a blue line on their curb. I was a little bit resistant to that because I think that would need to come before Council. Anytime you put, you know, the yellow line on a curb, no parking area, blue lines signify handicapped, but they wanted a vertical blue line on that curb. I think that should go to Council if you're interested in it. They also talked about maybe doing a stencil shield that they could maybe voluntarily put on their sidewalks or in their driveway, kind of like the Bulldog paw print that a lot of citizens do. So, I wanted to bring that before you tonight. Is this something you were interested in as far as the curbs are concerned, or would you encourage them to just do the stencils, basically either on their sidewalk or their driveways?
Okay. Go ahead.
Just personally, if you do a vertical line on the curb, it's going to be covered up with snow, and nobody's going to know it's there. I think, I think it's a great idea. I think it's super. I think maybe it needs a little more thought as to how we would do that. I think it's great. I think we need to do something. I'm all for it.
Yeah, my personal opinion, just to throw it out, just as an opinion right now, would be something that would be obviously more visual, would be something on the driveway. You know, the Bulldog paw print has obviously been a big success. It's obviously very visible, and something that would be, I think, more visible to the people, and you could do more with it, and that would be my personal preference. It'd be much more visible than a curb line, like Councilmember Stevens said. It would be easily covered up with snow, but just as an opinion.
Also, I can remember years ago, there were some groups that wanted to paint something on the sidewalk, and I can't remember what it was, but there was considerable discussion at that time. If we allow one group to paint something, say, in front of a business downtown on the sidewalk, then another group may come and say, we want the same privilege. How do you tell them no? So, I'm just thinking a little more thought. I'm for it, one hundred and ten percent, but just a little more thought as to how we're going to do it.
If I may, Mayor. I agree with you, Skip. I would sure totally supportive. The Bulldog prints, those types of things worry me because unless you renew them every year or two, they start to, so, to do something in a driveway, and as you said, Matt, with the weather conditions, but, so maybe with more thought, is there something that can be done as a window sticker, you know, a residence or that type of thing? But I totally support it, but I'd like to maybe have a little more planning and thought.
Well, that gives our Council opportunity to think about and have some discussion with your friends and families and Police Department, and we'll be interested in your comments at the next meeting.
Yeah, and certainly, public opinion and letters and emails of support would be appreciated by the.
Any other topics? Thank you for reminding me, Jody.
You know, Your Honor, I just have one other quick opinion or comment here. Tonight, we saw a lot of change orders come past the Council, and I just want to just give a quick thank you to our staff. A lot of times, we don't give as much thank you to our staff for the hard work they do, and tonight, we saw eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in change orders to a net decrease. And what that means basically is, on projects, you know, as they're budgeted, there's always a certain amount of money that go in for contingencies that we don't, you know, foresee. And tonight, there was, like I said, a net decrease of eight hundred thousand dollars that we didn't use in projects. And I just have to give a hats off to our staff. You know, they're hawks when it comes to looking at projects and saving as much money as possible. And tonight, hats off to you for, you know, saving as much money as possible on these projects. I know Larry's not here, he's on vacation, but hats off to Cam Reeves, Water Pollution Control, Larry Seals. They really do, at the end of the day, are very careful about what the money they spend on projects, and if there's any money to be saved to the taxpayers of Otomo, they do a great job doing it. So, hats off to you guys. Keep doing what you're doing. We're proud of you, and thanks again for what you do.
Very well said. Thank you, Matt. Okay, if there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Go ahead. Six, ten.